Friday.
Yeah. That was a difference.
It was starting.
It starts on Sunday.
Did it go to four Fridays?
Goes to Saturday.
I was there Friday and he already had the arm goes up. The animals will be cheating.
I'm gonna dirty rat.
We were four forty.
One of the guys I hate, I'm doing this very.
Really?
I'm like. Didn't face you, faced me. I'm like, okay, you don't have a light up.
They were moving.
I don't celebrate from here. I'm like, see? Yup. All it took was a little bit of a weather change, I think. Allen Miss property.
There's a lot of people.
Mix of the part.
Yeah.
That's why. Yes, sir. Oh, shoot. At seven o'clock tonight. Everything else is a six, so you're on track. I forgot something today. Pretty much.
Yeah, we're all in late.
Don't start the meeting, they have. Office hours are eight, four thirty. Tomorrow's. They'll leave a message.
Okay, six o'clock, we call a meeting order. You can all please rise for the time of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty, justice, and rights.
Both of us on?
Correct.
We will need to approve this agenda before we prove it or let it add. The item. Putting next to you. Put that in with. The administrative report.
Um, Max, I would say consider it R and E.
Right consideration. Moves to approve the agenda, the addition of. Naperville development. And push them a second is. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I. Close. Passes. Next, we will need to approve. All items on the consent general will be approved with one motion unless someone. He goes that there's something that needs to be pulled. To view further. I'm all. I motion to approve. About a second?
Second.
Push them a second, is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
I. Close. Period. Anyone for the forum? So we will go to. Item five. Second, priority, no, permanent amendment.
The council wished me to read it in its entirety. It was read in its entirety, the first reading.
It's not made to be read in its entirety. Or someone.
Then I would recommend all questions. And then moving.
Does anyone have?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion to approve that thing. Done moves, I'll go. Seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I. Close.
We made it? Oh, okay, sorry. Missed that. Okay, so. Vote a four to one.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
We will move to. Item six, reports from staff. Mike?
Uh, well, I was gone most of October, so I don't have a lot to report to you guys, uh, other than we did identify. A sewer issue up on Carlson that has since been dug up and replaced. Thirty. Thirty eighty feet, I think roughly, of sewer main, a couple of sewer laterals that went to two houses. What we found was a bunch of old play tile collapsed, broken. How it was even really letting water through is anyone's guess, but. So that's been replaced and hopefully those homeowners will have a lot, a lot easier time now coming up. Julson's has done a fair amount of work on installation of fixtures out at Pine Tree Park bathroom. Sinks have been put in, toilets, the new water heater. This is a ways to go with stuff, but they're coming along nicely when we get out there. We've started to widen the road at Pine Tree Park. Being that campers are getting so much bigger now than they used to be. One of the main complaints that we ran into out there was. Two campers, you know, one going out, one coming in and didn't really see because of the windingness of the drive there, so we started to widen that out. Pine Tree Park got blown out, closed down for the season, same with the wayside after Halloween there. I think that's about all I have for you guys. Oh, one other thing, the county. Did come in and grade our gravel roads for us. It's something that I had worked out with Ed from the county. At this point, really, I don't know if there's a cost associated with it or not. I haven't gotten that information from him. I'm assuming not being, he went ahead and just moved forward. If that does come down, I'll let you guys know. But the reason for that was, uh, our grader, the age of our grader and what it would cost to repair at this point. It would cost almost maybe over half. If not more than what the grader is worth, just to repair. What's wrong with it? With that being said, just touch base with everyone so that you know. That machine will still be able to help us fall snow in the winter time. Mainly what's happening is. It's floating down on its own. We can't control the mold board, so it wants to drop. In the summertime, obviously, you can't have that or we're gonna have gravel roads with a big lobe section. I guess if you wanna race dirt bikes, it would be fun, but. In the winter time, when the roads are frozen, not a problem. So that's where that all is. Anything for me from anybody?
Get ready for the.
Cut you off, don't even say it. We're ready.
Didn't know. You know, did you have a price off the top of your head, Mike, for your grader? Just to put a dollar amount on it?
For replacement?
Yeah.
Ooh. It's a hundred thousand, I would guess. I mean, if you're talking a brand new machine, you're looking.
No, no, no.
Well over two. I guess I hadn't really, I had looked into it a little bit, but to be honest with you, I didn't look much because I had this idea in the back of my head, working with the county on it, so. Something that I think in the future we can possibly just get away from having that piece of equipment. Maybe switch to. You know, what we did with. Think you were here when we got the new truck. I know Max was. The deal we were able to find on that truck. Maybe. Down the road at some point in the future, we end up with two big trucks. That way we're able to haul faster, haul faster, we go away from having. We'll just have to see if we can work for that or not.
Anybody else? All right. Shonda, give your story.
Well, we're. Continuing to work toward opening our kitchen. We got news this morning that. Midweek this week is what we were planning and hoping for and found out that's not gonna be a possibility. We have a backwater sink and. Our air exchange, some items that need to be done before the, if you can open. Mainly because we need a final plumbing inspection before we can get. The Minnesota Department of Health up here to do their inspection. Today, we, Melissa and I run through several options. Trying to find a sink to put in there. Trying to beg, borrow a stainless sink. That would work in the interim till we got ours. Then we got the news that the air exchange would not be up and running. So. Still working, still working with Cassandra to see if there's something we can do, but it's looking really like next week before we get.
Backorder that far out?
What happened is when we ordered all of our equipment in March and April, um, this sink was backordered. We didn't really know if we were gonna get our fryers and our. Our top. We got those in, so then we got very enthusiastic. In saying, hey, this is going to be, this is going to work out really well. But. That's me to give them there because you need. We just need the inspections and they won't. I mean, you know, the job depends on. Do it right, we need to do it right.
I do have com- I have, don't have full confirmation, but I have been in touch with our equipment person who we've ordered all our inspectors. As soon as he can get a tracking number, he will email me. According to whatever he emailed, the last email that we had together, it is supposed to ship. It'd take a three to five day shipping.
Right, but then it's getting the plumbers back in. And then getting, because the plumber, the inspector, the inspector doesn't want. Oh, yeah, Friday you have a day, had it lined up for this Friday, but. If we don't use that spot, he's going to go somewhere else. And then weekends. So. But otherwise, very good, um, feedback from the community about the off sale, the, um. Beer cave, that kind of thing, really good. Some, you know, they're upset about their burgers still, so. We get about twenty calls a day. Are you up and running yet? We tell them, I, we're gonna put it all over Facebook, we're gonna put it on the big sign, we're ready, and we got burgers, but. The latest call in hopes.
I thought you guys were planning on doing some kind of a food truck for your opener, huh?
We were gonna, we tried that avenue also, yup. There was nobody available and people said, they said, no, we're going hunting.
We exhausted pretty much every avenue.
We had, yeah, we had, I had, I mean, Cassandra. Last Friday and be like, what can we do? Can we? Partially do this if we only use paper, you know, I mean. Seriously brought her up and had a look at it. Yeah. So, I mean. And I spent pretty, a good portion of the day trying to. Figure out a way. We can find a stainless steel sink, nobody's using.
What time?
Well.
Twenty by twenty by eight.
Yeah. It's a, it, I mean, we, and I'm still in contact with Cassandra, so I, I mean, I'm not trying to get anybody in the fossil at all.
Right.
We've just kind of, um, uh, things that we can. You know.
Unfortunately, this is most important sink.
Well, it's just, the thing is, is the. Minnesota Department of Health, I know you know for sure.
Yeah.
That they have very specific. Regulations that they have to go by, so.
Right. And I might want me.
Right? Right, so, yeah. But other than that, it's, it's going. Very anxious to get pullback, back and pull. Selling tons of beans. New questions? Said it's some, well, yeah, I mean, it is, they. Company.
It's my stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Get you to come back, it's been a year, so. All the timelines. Much they've changed.
Right, and then, and our people, like our employees have been really. Really good, because it's like, yeah, let's go. Yeah, no, let's not go. Yeah, let's go. So. And we had to do much calling today, like, try to figure out. We're gonna start, you gotta, you live here, here's some hours. They didn't really do.
Anybody else? For Shonda? Thank you. Got anything from?
Uh, the. Interview panel was meeting on November eighteenth at the golf course. We'll be interviewing five candidates that afternoon.
That is for the.
That is for the full-time patrol officer position. The chief, um, candid search is going to be ongoing. So there is the, uh, full-time patrol officer position, and then there's the chief position. So technically, there's two full-time positions to be full. Laurie.
Put one.
Correct, so what we'll be interviewing for on the eighteenth is for that patrol officer position. If there are candidates that we feel would or potentially have. You know, somewhat of a, a level of experience to fulfill that chief position, that would be something Rob will discuss after we're done. But at this time, um, we will be interviewing chief.
And the committee consists of?
Jason Ranks from the sheriff's office, Rob, myself, and Don.
Any else? Police line? Uh, Jim, we're to the golf course.
Well, it's been put to bed.
Good.
We need some snow ASAP.
Coming.
I don't know if everybody in the room agrees with that.
The chemicals that are on it. Do a safe good.
Okay.
The. Equipment, uh, all the golf carts. The gas ones. We were topped off and then stable, stable put in, and then we run around the course, couple times, make sure. We'll say what works, way too.
Yep.
Cover everything, protect the ceiling. All the gas equipment, they're up in the garage, same thing. Taking care of. All the water cool equipment. It's all being checked, it's all good, we're putting more. We're already not down Thursday. So, we're down. My water softeners are built, so it should be good probably if you're wondering, you know, you need more water. So, it's been really well. And the furnace filter. And there's an extra in there. And we also check that maybe on my one key.
Is that something you have on a water monitor?
What?
Like, temperature drops?
On, in terms of heat in there?
Yes.
So the clubhouse was built with, uh. With a heated slab. Portion of it is out, its backup is propane.
I was at thirty-five, sixty.
We pop in from time to time just to check.
And it's, right now, it's being rented twice in December, so there'll be some moves.
Good.
The rails have all been picked up. We'll come back sometime in the spring. And down, we're still through each other. Okay. As I said, the water softener, the old softener, you used that. Even when it was used, it went to salt. As I said, I made sure it's full, so. If you guys wanna check if we can, but I doubt if we're gonna have to have reset.
When the, the new carts are charging or plugged in, all where, or plugged in and.
Kevin said somebody has to stop mine once a month, and I'm brought him, and I'm back in.
Uh, we talked to the Gulf Board and I'll, I'll go off there once. Kevin said he'll go off there once, so, well, between, between the board members and, you know, if the city guys have time, we'll, we'll make sure. Two of them are getting picked up tomorrow by Kyle Boyer, so Minutemen can start doing wraps on them for the car sponsorship, so. I'll be there tomorrow, I can pretty start on. Um, the other thing on there, Max, is, uh, the Gulf Board met and reviewed the applicants for the director position and. Interview letters have been sent out, and those interviews will take place at the Gulf Course on December second. To recandid us.
Yeah, I got that email.
Okay.
This year was better than last. We had seven thousand fifteen rounds per year. This year, we had seven thousand one hundred twenty-three. So. We have these increases.
Good thing. Anything else for Jim?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Bye, careful.
Yeah.
Here. Here, moving tonight.
Do we have anything from the library?
Uh, I don't have anything specific from Kelly, but I just wanted to report that the. Furniture that was requested to order la- the last meeting, the, the product got ordered. Everything that was on Kelly's wish list, that ordered and got delivered. However, Kelly, uh, did not look at the table. Requirements close enough, and there was no pedestal. That is a different, that was additional price, another hundred and eighty dollars, basically cost of the tabletop itself. I looked into it, it's on backorder for a couple of months, so. I.
Truly.
Yeah. She's got, and she's got a nice big circle sitting over there with nothing to put it on that this time. But the chairs are there, so they're at least.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and she's probably not the first person, when I look back at all the reviews, it was everybody's like, we should would have said pedestal not included. Everybody that ordered it in the past is like, where's my pedestal? So, it's an honest mistake, but it's not much more to get it, so move forward with that one.
There you go.
Okay. Pretty much, yeah. I don't know how that happens.
Have you had a chance to sit in on a meeting yet?
No, coming up. I know. They're both in the same.
We're to you, Kristina.
Okay, well, I'll turn it over to the guests that are here tonight, um, uh, Laurie and Tony are here for, that's her two. Are here to discuss, uh, something that Henstark wants, so we'll move over to you guys. That's up to you, council.
So it's up to you, Tony. If you wanna stand up there, you can stand up there.
I'm tired of sending so much energy right now.
As long as you guys can project and the speaker can get to that.
Okay. So, um, basically, our idea is, um, it kind of falls along the same line. Have a nightly, nightly life, like Midge does. Some of the ideas we have for it is having, uh, I know Henstark, we're gonna be doing, uh. A hot cocoa for, and we may have, uh, some, possibly apple cider popcorn cookies. Storytimes possibly, visit with Santa. We talked to Jacob Lee about doing some music in the pavilion. And, uh, I mean, looking at sleigh rides or wagon rides for the kids. Uh, also some reindeer games and snowman building, got snow, which by the fourth of December, we probably should. We have already talked to a couple of businesses in towns about, uh, hospital donations, if this were to come up, and we've already got. Seven businesses. And if we're able to do this, go on around, talk to the rest of the businesses. Of the seven we talked to, they've all been for it, so. Basically, what we'd be asking of the city would be, obviously, on the fourth, if you could have the event out at the wayside rest. As well as, uh. Hang the electric bill, or possibly a hundred to a hundred fifty LED Christmas lights. Um, I did some math with, uh, electrician from the, uh. By Chaminck County Electric today. A hundred strings of LED lights with a hundred lights each for fourteen hours a night. From the fourth of December to January first would be an additional three, three-five. Around two, twenty, thirty-five dollars a month for the electric. And if we were to do it just on the weekends even, it would only be about fifty, seventy bucks. So it wouldn't be a huge, um, addition to the electric bill. I also found out one circuit, uh, one breaker with LED lights could actually, uh, run a hundred and forty strings. LEDs are really, really, uh, co- LEDs are really, really cost efficient, so if we're able to do this, that's important, the LEDs. Try and make sure that light, that light bill stayed down for you guys. But yeah. We are, the businesses we've talked to already, um, some have said they're going to cash donation for it. And others have said they would. So as it sits right now with only seven businesses on board, should we get quite a few lights that way, and I still got thirteen, fourteen businesses to have to. So I think lights should be covered. But. That's what we're looking at.
And I need to say, oh, that this is a parent committee at Head Start that is bringing this forward because Head Start.
We're not allowed to mention all that is. So, yes, it is, because me and my wife and a fairly large. As well as.
The idea is to bring the community together, to celebrate together and to have something that. What's lacked up in a favorable light. By everybody that passes by on the highway and sees all. And then we also have a lot of staff and parents that are willing to volunteer to. String lights, the lights up. The decorations are. It's a disaster, a place to, to do that and help with the like.
You know where the idea is of breaking lights.
Um, prevailing. Light poles out there. The stream went down. It was out there, right before the meeting I went out, I, just to let you know, there is fifty six plugins. I had to double check on that to make sure. But, uh, no, I went off there and checked. But, um, but no, we're hoping to screen them down the light holes out there. We'd like to put sandwiches here and there. If we can get lights out to possibly. Or her, sorry. Drake, male doc. But yeah, pretty much anywhere we can get lights, but.
We also realize, I, I hope we realize all of this, that this is pie of the sky that, uh, the nightly light in the midgie didn't start where it is now. So maybe adding food vendors or crafts or stuff like that comes down the road. But just to start an annual celebration.
Yeah.
Yes.
Get the donations.
Would you be, uh, getting new strings of lights each year like, uh, the J C's doing for Midge or?
That's not J C's, no one that does that. That's a separate entity that does that. It's a new group. That does that.
It's the nightly light. Maybe on board, they have their own website.
The J, the J C's got all too old to do it. Why my friend does it? That's all the nonprofit.
Okay, so back to my original question.
We'll probably only look. For future, cause I mean, if you. Just keep going. Now we lose last.
I was pretty sure. One that's in the midgie, they just cut them down.
Yeah.
This is, if they get strung up in the trees, it's too difficult.
Yeah, that's, that's why I kind of went with the trees to see if we're hanging up. Really string them up. Great covered, so.
Well, next, like the electric bill down there is not that much in the winter time, most of the streetlights, except for. We're heating the wayside because we're not, we're not, we're not heating the, eating the restaurants anymore, so there's that reduction on the budget. It's not a real big strain.
So yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. I think you got everybody else here for it. I would say. Lori, since you, uh, that you're at library meeting, I know the library gives out books every year when they do their visit with Santa. And I think everybody should kind of get together on this. Two groups, your group that maybe at the next library meeting, talk with them and see what they want, see if they want to be a part of that.
Yeah, I would imagine.
And we have another. Donation request coming up next. Uh, well, maybe they would want to be part of this also, but is, is there anything that we need to do?
You just need to approve covering the costs that they're asking for. And they should not exceed, it should not exceed five dollars. In terms of electrical costs. But I would just put that into the form of a motion and. Give your approval of that then.
I would under, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Cost of what? And the use of the wayside rest.
Any further discussion on it?
Be nice to see this come to our community.
Yeah.
Yeah, great job. A great idea.
Is there anything?
Did you want to do?
Uh, December four.
December four.
Nightly lights in the.
A lot of work in between, um.
We're, we're flirting with, uh, just went to Wonderland right now.
There's something you can leave with me to take to the library. And you can get a copy of it. Okay. Alright, thanks.
I would encourage you to get in touch with Mick Lyon and Sandy Miller in part of the parks. I'm sure they'll help. One way or the other, cause Sandy's heading up the Boy Scouts and as a teacher, so. And look for connections at Forest Reach.
Okay, awesome.
Sorry, uh.
It's okay. Anyway, if there was no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I. Close. None. Very. Good luck.
Thank you.
And, uh, I assume you'd be. Like a Facebook kind of a notification and you send something out?
Oh yeah, I'll be posting on the, uh, the.
Okay, so if you're looking for volunteers to, people can come down to.
Is that something fun to put on the?
Absolutely.
Sackling is no, and for sure, for sure what's going on, when it goes on, yeah, just let us go.
Perfect, thank you guys.
Okay. Definitely bring us to.
Hi, I'm Eric Knottin, who's here also. So we are asking for a donation for Toys for Kids, a non-profit organization to make sure that every kid in Blackwood has a fantastic Christmas. We have already exceeded our two hundred and ten that we served last year, we were, we are at two hundred and.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six already, and we're still waiting on the elementary school to get us their list. Um, which we predict will be a lot of kids that we already have on our list from last year, but they're making the ones, so it could grow. It was a great turnout, we heard things so far from the program. As you know, we are only in our second year of doing this. And we had COVID in between, so we had some different things done now, yeah, that will actually keep in place too. We ended up renting the senior system center for distribution, so we had a bigger area and we actually brought. The gifts out to the parents, so there was no contest, and then they don't see what else is going on inside the building. No comparing back. It worked out very well. Yeah, and we, um, last year asked forty-three businesses, we sent out forty-three letters, this year we sent out eighty-three letters, we sent out double the amount of letters this year. Um, an average donation of the forty-three was about fifty dollars a letter. So we did get the two thousand dollar grant from Operation Mountain to this year.
What was the increase of students this year?
Uh, ninety-six, but that's, that's school district wide.
Correct. And last year's donation was.
I knew you were gonna ask me that.
One.
A lot.
It was one thousand.
Kendra almost cried, Kendra was crying when she left, so it was a lot. Jason was very generous, yeah. Much of.
And, uh. So. First one.
We do have them on.
I'd like to hear yours. Yeah. But it's about four thousand.
It's forty dollars per kid plus a set of mittens and hats, and they're not just the mittens that you.
Not like the knitted ones, they're the big heavier ones, since we live in Minnesota, we get some nice heavier gloves.
So those don't run, I would say another twenty dollars at least for the mitten hat set on the forty dollars, so it's about sixty dollars. Yes, we did, but not. Because of COVID, I thought we weren't gonna get it again this year, but we did.
It was only four thousand dollars. Correct?
Yeah, it was four thousand.
It's, uh. There's. One in the liquor fund right now.
There's seventeen in the fund balance, and to date, the city has donated. Over ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars in donations this year out of that fund so far to date. And typically, the city only donates somewhere around seven is what Shonda and I put in the operating budget. That's a new income statement. I've been very generous this year, so. Just keep in mind the parameters and how it. You know, improves the community and what that, what that fund is for.
Don't you want to make a motion? It looks like you want to make a motion.
I would just like to say, before we decide on something. If we're gonna decide on anything. That we have this first annual thing here that we should. City should actually help, I mean, we're gonna help them all with electric and everything else, but.
And that's not coming out of the liquor rent fund.
No.
That'll come out of the general fund.
Yeah. So. Yes, I wasn't here last year when you, you guys were.
We appreciate it, I don't want to.
All for you.
Yeah.
I know.
Also the same thing.
I know, but.
Last year was the first year of Kinderer and Head Start, and they really.
There's a real few.
Made a huge impact on the community by taking it over.
Yes.
And it was.
When the torch was passed, you guys didn't let it drop.
Yeah, and it was very well received in the community. The results regardless of who donated and who contributed to it, just the fact that it was still going on. And how badly the community needed it after last year, everybody knows last year was hard on everybody. So, yeah. One year you can't compare to the other.
So was this like the toys for cats, like, you know, they had here a few years ago?
Yeah, it's, it's been there for twenty plus.
And that got dropped here?
No, we've never let it drop.
Okay, so you guys.
So we just took over from people that have been doing it sixteen plus twenty years.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, alright. So I, the thing I was saying, you know, kind of comparing here, I mean. They're gonna try to start something here, which be, then. We, which we are true there and then have the.
Two thousand?
But I'm not saying a number here.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, probably, because we're not gonna leave any.
Right, we're gonna go in something.
Four thousand was kind of an exception because of COVID and the depression that last year. I mean, we, what do you? More, you, obviously.
Want to reduce it? As the, where do we keep going with, with four thousand?
What happens next year if we can't, it won't do that. I'm all for it, more than better for the kids.
Even at two thousand dollars, you're helping on thirty-three kids. Just think of that. It's a good chunk of our kids.
Twenty kids.
Right now, whatever, two to twenty-six.
With a few more, probably add a few that, but elementary gets their number.
Yeah, which we all have. And then even. Uh, what was it, the, our first, no, our last day of giving our gifts, we had a family of ten.
Yeah.
Call us and say, what can you do for us, and we were able to serve them on the day of the. Yeah.
And it's not like it goes the ways you guys say it works up.
Oh, oh, yes.
Always.
Yes. Shot for Christmas in June.
Well, you know.
I wish I would burn that.
You know, you don't cross really good deals.
That, that is right. We now know what kind of ages we struggle with, so. And every little bit of.
That's what we're looking at, is the number.
I guess I would make a motion to keep it at four thousand.
I was made a motion. Do I have a second? Motion, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Passes.
Thank you so much. Yes, very appreciated.
Very much.
Yes.
One cry. And if you, we do post it on Facebook, um, so if you know of anything, please send them up.
Thanks for doing it, guys.
Uh, this next resolution is to approve an excluded bingo license for the Blackwood area Chamber of Commerce, so that they can have bingo at the liquor store on December twelfth. This will be just like they did, um, at the Backwoods Bash, but instead of at the Wayside Rest located. In the bar.
The motion to approve. Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor or, excuse me, any discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Uh, D for council consideration is the commercial demolition project reconstruction plans that were discussed at the work session for the redevelopment project. I added today, um, one additional document, and that is a rendering proposal. If the council wishes to have that further discussed at the work session, it can be tabled next. However, I asked, um, uh, With Seth to add to this, how much it would cost if we could have a, an architect or somebody actually put together some type of site drawing, so that the site could be proposed for development to attract somebody to actually buy and build. Um, so I had With Seth put that together to consideration, so that's just a second item on the same project.
Yeah, I would rather see that talked about first.
Okay, very good.
That's Debbie giving a little more thought.
Okay.
Does.
Yeah.
I thought.
Pardon?
I thought maybe they could kick that in.
Yeah, no, that's not gonna happen. And so then I guess I'm max, I'm requesting action on the commercial demolition project amendment to, uh, approve the reconstruction plans.
Okay. I will need a motion to approve that.
Motion for the commercial demolition project?
Correct.
Motion for the commercial demolition project? For the reconstruction plans, reconstruction. Wait.
I have a motion, but I have a second. I will second. Now, if there's something someone wants to talk about or ask a question about.
Did they come up with a price on that yet?
You mean?
The reconstruction plan?
No, because the plans aren't done.
Oh.
They have nothing to give you a bet on if they don't know what to do. And it's one step in front of the other. So I can't give it to somebody without knowing what to give them. And to be honest, I haven't heard back from the contractor either, so they're not gonna give me something if they don't know what to do.
So, then what are we bidding on, or?
Currently?
Yeah.
Considering to approve With Seth to create the reconstruction plans.
At how much?
Nine thousand one hundred and seventy dollars.
Any further discussion? Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, passes.
Okay. Next item on council consideration is the proposal from NFO Marketing Group on the website proposal as discussed at the work session. I, uh, what Max added to the agenda was this email at your station from a well, web developer by the name of Snapper Tail. The person that emailed me this is somebody I've worked with in the past that used to be part of, um, Evolve, the current designer that holds our license. He obviously saw that this pinnacle was on our agenda, and the last ditch effort to see if the council would consider someone else providing a proposal. Um, as you might know from the work session, there was already discussion from uh, the chamber and the development corps on moving forward with Pinnacle and how that was gonna look, and what the council was to consider approving moving forward, but tonight was how that website reconstruction was gonna work. Keeping the liquor store on their own page, keeping Evolve on their own page, and then keeping the city together. The chamber decided separate, however it wishes to do, so that I can alert Pinnacle, so. Tonight, we need some type of action, so.
The only reason we, I have it was to make sure everybody was aware that it was another option. That we've already pretty much, you know, we've already heard from the chamber. Of course, of course. On, also heard from, they would like to work with Pinnacle. But I just, like I said, I wanna make sure that it was there, had questions or we wanna talk about it, then we can.
Also, if I may, Max, um, the development corps and the chamber is working together with that pinnacle on a marketing strategy for the community, um, which is completely separate from redevelopment website. And they're considering funding that as a full marketing, um, campaign. That'll go on multiple, um, platforms, uh, TV, radio, internet, and they're looking towards funding that separately, but going with Pinnacle, so it has one continuous theme, if you will. I do have the understanding that the development corps has, um, put in a grant request with the L. Triny County Development, Community Development Grant to help fund part of that project, so they're very positive about moving forward with the marketing campaign. They're just looking on the best way to fund it.
And I I'm looking for proposal.
Is that the same place that you're using now?
No. The company that we're using right now is called Evolve.
Okay.
Pinnacle is.
Well, that's different, but with the, this, this somebody that.
This gentleman here used to work for Evolve.
Okay.
Went out on his own.
Okay.
This is his, this is his company.
His company?
Yeah.
Okay. I just got lost in the transition.
Yeah, um, little more backstory, he actually worked for Design Angler, too, before they folded. So he's got quite a background in web development. Um, he was great to work with when he was with that company, but now he's on. Thank you.
And so so much has been done, I think, already with Pinnacle, we've already laid a pretty good plan. Very from myself. Someone else gives the otherwise. That's just for consideration. Also.
That's my understanding that after the work session, the council was in favor of doing the individual websites and not moving forward with an all-in-one site, unless it just included, like, right, you know, one of the city entities, because the chamber was fine going off on their own, you know, website, not obesive with cities. So what the board just needs to discuss and agree to tonight is how that agreement's gonna look. You, um, just find out a little bit better what it looks like. We need to decide on what it looks like. Yeah, um, the.
Packages?
Yep, the two different packages that Amanda proposed was an all-in-one, which it sounds like we're not doing, right? The individual site proposal that she provided was city, chamber, golf course, and with, and the pond, where the individual city site redevelopment cost would be three thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars with seventy-nine dollar a month service. Um, the chamber was on its own, the golf course, uh, development would be a thousand twenty dollars with monthly fee of forty dollars to keep that, um, that particular, particular page going, and then the liquor store would be eight hundred and fifty dollars to develop, um, and a forty dollar a month service. So if the city was going to move forward, Lori, it would look like those three city, golf course, the pond, the city part of the page, the city page would have, um, a big dip color for country park in it. Country park wouldn't have its own page, but it would be buried inside the whole page as it sits right down.
Okay.
Also, please keep in mind the chamber agreed to donate a thousand dollars to the city to help redevelopment.
Sort of taking this option.
Yes.
Take the package.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all.
Well, if it entertained a motion to approve. One of the options.
Motion, but option two, I'm, I'm looking at that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Or, and twenty-one? Or is it twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-eight? I'm not sure.
You're on the end page, Lori.
No, it's fine.
No, there's no number?
It's not a resolution.
Okay.
To approve this.
Then I will, most of the options to probably Pinnacle marketing for the web and it's not. Unless the chambers page was, that would not be funded by the city.
Correct. That is the motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? I opposed. Should pass it. Now. Resolution for meeting schedule next year.
Motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-eight, resolution satisfying the city council meeting schedule for twenty twenty.
Second.
Any discussion? So much after Monday.
Just one, two, three.
One of that, I just. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good luck if you are. Hearing none, passes.
Uh, Max G, resolution two thousand twenty-one, twenty-nine is the adoption of this language access plan to improve limited English proficencies proficiencies for people inside the city. This was a requirement from USDA. Um, goes back to last year when we received the grant, loan combination to purchase the skid steer. This is one of their requirements from federal that, um, the city adopts a language access plan if it had limited, um, English-speaking, uh, people in the community. I was, I did the research, I did establish there are two Hispanic families inside the city that do have challenges, and then going forward from there, I had to develop a plan. And it directly relates to the use of where the money is being spent from the federal government. So provided those families are not gonna have use or access to the skid steer, there was really no action for us, but this particular plan had to be, uh, um, adopted. So now that I have the legwork done, the resolution passed, proving the plan. Um, just a side note, when the Public Works Police Facility moves forward, I'll have to adopt another one because it's directly the focus of what the result of the financial, um, benefit is and how that benefits the community and their access to it. So it might change in the future when that goes forward. So, but for now, we just.
Yeah, I remember when we started doing it.
To approve.
Go. Motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing.
The next thing I have in your pocket is, um, for information, um, as I stated at the work session, um, I've confirmed that the American Rescue Act funding can support, um, a reduction to our two thousand twenty-two levy by additional. a reduction to our two thousand twenty-two levy by additional funding to our police department to retire to pre-pandemic levels. That was confirmed by a financial advisor. Additionally, the city can use up to ten percent of that of American Rescue funds for administrative purposes. So I took four thousand, well, we're gonna get eighty-four thousand, so ten percent is eighty. So I took that and split it into levy years. So I can take four thousand and add it to the administrative budget to reduce costs associated with all the compliance of the fund, which can reduce your two thousand twenty-two levy by a total of nineteen thousand dollars. I provided the updated budget lines, how it affects the levy as a whole and how it can affect the overall individual tax to pay, to an individual taxpayer on the home. Um, this will bring the productive, preliminary levy from what we adopted in September of what seventeen to twenty-two. It's still an increase, but it's almost half of what we're stating. So what I'm just trying to explain is that if the council is okay with this, which I know everybody is wanting to reduce it, my truth and taxation report and your final levy approval on December sixth meeting would be approved with this reduction.
Yep. You ready with that?
Yeah.
If you agree, I'll make good with that.
Um, just to give you a quick preview, I've been working on the truth and taxation report and I'm adding some, a good page and a half of language in there that I've never done before that kind of carves out the projects the city's been involved in in the last year and a half. The benefit the project liquor store will have to the community and levy and some of the other projects that are coming up, including the proposed half percent sales tax increase. Hoping that gets some publicity. Not quite done with it, but I hope that'll get some, some people listening. Because I know it's difficult to get people to, onto meetings unless they want something. And most people, they either want money or they don't want any taxes and other, those are the only two we get the public from. So I expect that the December sixth meeting will have the public here. Because what the public is gonna see in their envelopes, probably this week, are their preliminary tax increases. And that's why I wanted to call this to your attention today so that if you have any run-throughs with public and taxpayers, you can explain to them that we found a way to reduce it. If they have interest, make it to the truth and taxation. So I don't need, I don't need like a motion or anything on this, I just wanted to make sure you guys were, you know, thinking that this is the forward way I'm going and I wanted to make sure I had your backing. I'm gonna drop it in your lap. And. Uh, aside from that, I have a bunch of dates on the calendar, they're coming up. Uh, next BBC meeting is this Wednesday. Veterans Day is Thursday, so Black Duck City Hall is closed that day, will reopen on Friday. The next area chamber and commerce meeting is seventeenth at noon and this month it's at restaurant seventy-one. Uh, the planning commission is scheduled to meet also on seventeenth at two PM. There has been very little action for the planning commission in the last four months. I haven't had, I haven't had either a quorum or the, or the planning commission needed to be met. So I imagine there won't be, there may not be a November meeting, I have it on the calendar though. I'll let you guys know if it doesn't happen. Um, November twenty-second is the next scheduled work session, that's the Monday prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. The Thanksgiving holiday, um, city hall is closed on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. And then the next scheduled, the next scheduled council meeting on the truth and taxation, very like stated earlier, is December sixth. And that's all I have unless council has any questions for me.
No, I'm good.
A couple things in the community events, we'll get down to them, Max.
Yep, we're. We're there.
Once you have your reports or anybody needs to talk to us.
Everybody have any? Any good stuff? Or?
For liking the likes stuff, I heard lots of comments, okay? I was just saying. I know, I was like, well, it's nice enough, I get it, but yeah, I just heard comments, it's a like in it, that's good. So.
The garden club does that and then usually the week of or after Thanksgiving, Bill Charny electric will come up and force. They do, they do that, they do it for us because they're the, they have a bucket truck, we need nice service, so very helpful.
Said November eleventh?
Is Veterans Day.
It's Veterans Day and Black City Hall is closed, but I would urge everyone to go to the Veterans Day concert and there's a dinner that happens at the school every year. So work through that.
I think it was in the papers too.
Right. We could get a. Paige and Christina got an attaboy letter.
But I don't really know if it's an attaboy letter.
Yeah, that's really dreadful.
So I, I put this in for two reasons, one because it was, you know, and a recognition, but I can tell you that it was, the problem that happened was these folks booked their stay before we knew when our reconstruction and our interior thing was gonna happen. So we quick did what we could to find an option for them because they're, they travel and they needed to use, you know, the showers and we didn't have them open yet. And I called the school and Mr. Lund Dean was very generous, he said, yep, they can use the locker rooms. Um, at this time and this date, at, when they get here and they never showed up. So I just don't know if it was conducive for them, but it was nice to partner with the school and they were welcome to do it. But for some reason, it just didn't work out for them. So I think that's where the letter reads a little weird. I, I, I think Walden and his wife weren't communicating well because we were speaking with his wife and, yeah, either way. Yeah, so they gave us a hundred dollars and I put it in the country park fund as a donation.
Excellent. That's, you know, I mean, usually if it's not an attaboy, they're not going to be giving a donation.
Yeah. And then there's a thank you letter from the chamber for the golf horse event and the contribution and the help. I recognized, I also put on there that the chamber's bingo is December twelfth from one to three, that is a Sunday, that's a Sunday, the Vikings don't play. That was the way they chose it so that it gets some people in. So hopefully it'll get some people in their staffing and so. Um, and then there's some anniversaries coming up before December here of our fire and our police department that we recognize.
Yeah, so fully. Estes Rockinsock, sixteen years, Brian Larson, eighteen years, fire chief, yep. Lee Anderson, police department, four years. That's for us. We thank them all. Then, there's nothing else. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.